It's a little past 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court Meeting, County of Starr, Monday, August 13th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. Want to welcome and thank y'all for being here. Everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance, the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands. One nation, a home of our brothers and sisters, with liberty and justice for all.
How many minutes?
I'll let the CTE agents, they're printing out the minutes.
Okay. We'll skip the minutes until they're printed. Prodo claims, Mr. Carter, they in order?
Yes, Judge, all the claims have been reviewed and now all in order.
All right, this is what we are on.
Second motion.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We do have a few people from out of town that are here, so if it's okay with the court, I'll call on them. And let me remind that we do have a quite lengthy agenda, so if we can be brief in our reports and our presentations, I would certainly appreciate that. First, let's skip to item 16, and that's discuss and take action on tax resale bid for November 7th by our delinquent attorneys.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, Commissioners, just for the record, Michael Canno with the Lime Bargre firm. As you know, we're your delinquent tax attorneys, and this is a previous agenda item that we've been here before on some resale properties that were sold back in November. As you know, Judge, we sold back then about 39 properties. We removed all the Campo Velo properties. We're currently working with the City of Roma to see how we're going to best dispose of those properties. So in the meantime, we're trying to get these approved. These are the remaining 12 properties, and you'll see in your packet, the bids I received on these 12 properties, as well as photos of the properties. The majority of these properties, Judge, are all either empty lots or abandoned properties. None of them are being occupied at this time. So it is our general recommendation that we approve these bids, so we can get the properties transferred to the bidders of the cellu-- and also put them back on the tax roll.
Okay. On those handouts, Michael, you have amount for district? Is that the school district, or?
That is correct. Yes, yes.
So you don't have the amount for the county?
Well, this should be on there in every one of them. There-- which one are you referring to? I'm looking at just--
The-- this report?
Okay, I apologize. Let me see. I think what happened is they left district, that should be the county. If you look at the individual analysis bid sheet of each one, Judge--
Uh-huh.
If you go, for example, to the very first one, it has the amount, for example, I know on that table it says 669.27, which is the first property. But if you go to the actual bid sheet, you'll see that that 669.27 is actually the amount for Starr County, Judge. So I apologize, I think it was just a typo in my office. When they did the actual table, it shouldn't said amount for the county. But if you look at the breakdown of every individual account, for example, that first one, it shows Roma ISD receives 1,002.53, South Texas called it receives $58, and Starr County receives 669.27. So it was just a typo on the table.
Have you presented this to any of the other entities?
Yes, we've presented it to the city and the school. We're pending the school district's approval, but the city has approved all of these as well.
I guess, you know, we certainly would like to get more money, but if that's what we have, that's what we have, and I think the beneficiary part about it is that we can put it back on the tax roll and start taxing it.
That is correct, Judge. If I can, I'll be really brief in saying this, that when-- anytime we sell these properties at a tax sale, or we call a resale, we put up these properties before for sale, they fail to-- and when we first sell these properties, we have to-- the starting bid has to be the amount of taxes owed, or the appraised value, the lower of the two. They failed to sell. In other words, we did not get a bid at that first tax sale. So these properties were struck off to the county, which basically means the county becomes the owner of these properties, and has been the owner of these properties in many cases for several years now. So there's two problems with that. One is you haven't collected the tax owed to the county and all the other jurisdictions, but two, it's a tax exempt property, so it's not on the tax roll. So what we do is we put it back up for sale, we publicize it in the local newspaper, on our local website, and we have pretty much the same investors that travel throughout the state buying these properties. And all of these properties, you know, may have something wrong with them. The buyers are buying them without having any guarantee that, you know, there's no title issues, or, you know, they're buying it subject to any and all other liens that may exist on the property as well. So, you know, and a lot of these that have structures on them, there's no guarantee that the structures are safe to actually inhabit. In many cases, they have to actually demolish the structures and rebuild on those structures. So it's a-- I know when you see the appraised value of the properties, it seems kind of high compared to what you're getting on the purchase side, but you've got to understand the way the appraisal district works is they just attach a value based on the square footage of the property, and if there's an improvement on there, the square footage of the improvement. And it's upon the taxpayer to go and challenge that value, so to speak. But these properties, since they're abandoned, no one's going to challenge the value, so you kind of have a false high appraised value many times.
One other thing, Michael, if I may interrupt you, is Ms. Alinas presented to the court, and we went ahead and approved, that before anyone can buy at a sale, they must be current on all their taxes.
That is correct. We do require that they have a certificate issued by the tax office that shows they're not delinquent on any of their other properties. Otherwise, they cannot bid. So again, Judge, we always recommend the approval of these. It's the most amount of money we can get, and there's two options to sell resale properties. The county can entertain private bids. In other words, someone can come to our office and just say, hey, I'd like to make an offer on this, on this property, and we bring that offer up to you. It's our office policy not to accept private bids, because we, you know, it's not very transparent. So we do everything by public auction. We notify everybody, we put it in the local paper, and we think this is the most we can get. You know, we take the losses where we can, and then just put them back on the tax roll.
Yeah, if it's okay, that's all we can get, so I just want that we approve the resale. Get them off the, off the delinquent roll and get them back on the tax roll.
I have a motion, a second to go ahead and approve the resale bid. Any further discussion? Honorable fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 17 is to approve a resolution on the November 7th sale.
Right, that's just the formality, that's just the resolution that authorizes the sale.
Okay.
I just want to move in. I second, Judge.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please say aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge, and thank you for moving me up, and I just want to let the court know that we'll continue to work with the City of Roma on those Campo Velo properties, and we'll have a resolution for those properties here pretty soon. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Michael. Item 41, if I may be allowed to skip to that, that's an action item, and this is for a tax abatement on the Mesteno Reinvestment Zone, number one. Who's going to present that? And please identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Adam Glass. I work for Erston Young out of Boston, Texas, and I'm here representing-- this is Graham Furlong with Duke Energy, and Jeff Neves with Amshore, who is the developer for this particular proposed project. We're here today to present before you all, and we have some printed out presentations if you all would like to see them, or depending on the amount of information you all would like today in the court. We're here to answer any questions about the project that we can present in more detail pending your--
Yeah, certainly, I think the Commissioners need to know what area we're looking at, talking about.
Sure.
Yeah, what I meant about being-- your reports being condensed, we need the information.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so the other, the only other thing I will remind judge and court is this does have to be a public hearing for open comment for any of the participants, should anyone else have comment from the public. So I have here some presentations.
Okay, so you want this under a public hearing?
Yes, sir. At least, at least after this presentation to open a public hearing for public house.
Okay, I know, I know it was posted. Let me check, but go ahead. Get us some--
Yes, sir.
Did y'all post the public hearing?
Yes, sir, we did. And we confirmed with Becky that it was posted.
Okay, that's what Becky said.
So what is it, the veratim breakdown this time, Judge?
This is a, the reinvestment zone, we do these for anyone, when, solar, whoever comes in, and what that means is that reinvestment zone, any-- well, you want to go ahead and explain?
Sure, yeah, yes, sir. Commissioner, at this point, we're just requesting that the county establish a reinvestment zone, and we have a map of that zone here with us, and that was provided previously when we, when we requested this item be set for this particular meeting. And so the reinvestment zone just allows us to then come back to the court at a later date to formally request a tax abatement from the county. So we're not requesting the approval of any abatement right now. This is just establishing this area within the county--
Reinvestment zone, right?
As a reinvestment zone, yes, sir.
And this is, we're up close to Fortnite, ain't it? That's close to in my precinct, I understand. And if that's the case, I don't have a problem, Judge, but we want to make sure that when the time comes to get the abatement and the agreement, we had a terrible experience with company we're representing, and we want to make sure that it doesn't reoccur again.
Right.
So at this point in time, I don't have a problem to approve the reinvestment zone, but when it comes to the numbers and the contracts, we need to get those things really reviewed, hire an attorney, and you will pay for it.
Absolutely.
So that we make sure that all the Ts are crossed, and all the Is are dotted. Because we had a terrible here last time, we want to make sure everything is done correctly.
Yeah, the yellow area will be the reinvestment zone.
Yeah, now, now what y'all are asking for is just the reinvestment zone, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and we cannot take action on that until we have a public hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, so can, can we wait until after the meeting, we'll have a public hearing? Or what time did y'all post for, on the public hearing?
Yeah, I think we just referenced this meeting that began at 10:00 a.m. We didn't specify.
We can, we can break now from the meeting, Victor.
Judge, agenda item as stated, Judge?
Yeah, it's wrong.
Yeah, I was going to say, we actually need to create that zone today. Not the way it's stated, you mean. What you all, what's on the agenda is to do the actual abatement for that zone, it's not the creation of the zone.
We have to reword it, so we're going to have to table it until next meeting--
Correct.
And then reword it, have the proper wording in the agenda items, so that we can make the zone. Yeah, I was just pinpointing, I just pinpointed that too, Judge.
Are you ready to squeeze for time?
Yes, we are. What would be the, when would be the schedule to do all this again, sorry?
Probably in two weeks, we have another meeting.
Yeah, apparently, you know, y'all were supposed to get with Becky and put the language that we needed.
Yes, which we--
Somewhere in there, it didn't happen.
Okay.
Because what happened was, what's on the agenda is for the, the abatement, which we're not ready for that.
Right.
Okay, and nowhere do we have for a public hearing.
Okay.
So that didn't get into our agenda. Now, we can have a special meeting if you're under the gun. If not, in two weeks, we have another meeting.
We're going to have Wednesday, there's no--
Oh, that's right.
They posted already.
Until they posted, they already came out this morning.
Would you all be willing to set, and available to perhaps set the reinvestment, because the schedule that we had kind of laid out before was to hold the hearing today on just the reinvestment zone, and then come back, I believe, in two weeks and actually consider the abatement after working with the attorney to get the language right with the abatement agreement, like Commissioner Garza mentioned?
Yeah.
Could we do that all in one meeting two weeks from now?
It would not affect, Judge, actually, we could set all that up, and it would not affect a thing.
Okay.
Yeah, because if you all, y'all are not ready to do the abatement at this point--
Correct.
It can be created, and then the subsequent, that same meeting, the subsequent agenda item, it can be approved.
Yes, sir. So it would have to be open the public hearing to consider the reinvestment zone, then close the public hearing?
I think you can actually have that public meeting now. I mean, depending on how y'all posted.
Did you see this?
Yeah, it's been posted in the, in the paper.
It's been posted, you can probably have the agenda--
Yeah.
With the project this size, I think we need to be better organized.
The public hearing can be held, Judge?
It can?
Yes. The public hearing portion can be held after this Commissioners' Court is done today.
Can we recess now, have the public hearing, because they're, they got to leave?
Yes, that can be done, and then in two weeks, we can have the agenda item to create the zone itself--
Okay.
And then to approve any--
And consider the abatement itself. Okay, that's fine with us, sir.
Okay, so if it's all right, I'll entertain a motion to recess.
I shall move in.
Moved in second to recess our meeting, and I'll go ahead and call a public hearing to order, as posted in the newspaper, to discuss Mesteno, Mesteno Project. Okay, you want to tell the public a little bit about what the Mesteno Project is?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I'll start off, so I'm Graham Furlong with Duke Energy Renewables. We're the chief operator of Los Angeles 3, 4, and 5, so it's 500 megawatts located in South Texas. Those projects are online in 2015 and 2016, and we've been working on another project called the Mesteno Wind Power. It's proposing 200 megawatts just to the west of Los Angeles 4. So this is the west of 755. This is the reinvestment zone area, the area in yellow. So right now, we're asking that the county approve the reinvestment zone in yellow, which would allow it to tax base-- Yeah, maybe just I can provide some information on the project and its involvement. Again, you have needs with Amshore, who's been working on these projects, and as Graham said, those projects have been developed over several years, and actually one of the larger wind projects in the state of Texas now. And that obviously wouldn't have been possible without all the support and coordination from County leadership, the community, the landowners, the school leaders. So we're very proud of the Los Angeles projects, but one of the great things we have here is we have a lot of that great resource, obviously, in the same area where we're developing Los Angeles spaces. We've had a lot of landowners that are very interested in seeing the development of their property, and it's a great project for landowners. It'd be a way to diversify the use of their property enough, they don't take away the main business. Money, oil, and gas, I think. So--
And Stark County is very fortunate to have-- In these areas, we have those projects. But one of the big components of making a wind project work is obviously having the ability to get the electricity on, to market onto the power lines. So that's one of the things that we're trying to address right now, is that as more and more wind development occurs in South Texas, the opportunities to get these big projects built is kind of shrinking, because it's kind of first come, first served when it comes to getting the wind power onto those power lines. Stark County is very fortunate because of a lot of the work that was done on infrastructure projects, to have big transmission lines with a lot of capacity. So there is still potential for more development here, but that's one of the things that we're working towards, is trying to continue to make these projects happen in a timely fashion for other--
I have a concern or question.
Yes, sir.
When the project gets going, as blessed, it, this area pretends to be, in my precinct, the county roads, would they be maintained? Because I know there's a lot of heavy equipment, a lot of freighters and tractors coming in through.
It's a great, great question. And right now, our project plans--
Actually--
Yeah, the boundaries, like the road boundaries, just letting this point out. Yes, here's 755, and I think our plan is to come off of 755 into the project. We may need to cross La Morita Road, but I don't, right now, we're not planning to use La Morita for deliveries or heavy--
Okay.
Yeah, a good question.
Which county roads are, are you planning to do the delivery equipment and all that stuff?
So I think we'll just stick with state roads. So I think we'll just stick with state roads, so we'll use 755, Highway 755 for deliveries. So I think we'll be able to stay off of county roads. If that changes, we'll need to come back to y'all and work out--
Okay.
Yeah, one of the nice things, since we're kind of focused between La Morita and Sagamato Road, we can utilize a lot of those internal ranch roads, obviously improve the ranch roads, but we can use those private roads.
I would like to see La Morita and Asagunada improved, if we're going to use them, because we have a lot of erosion there, this bad rain.
Right.
And this red road is pretty bad.
Yes, sir. That's one of the things, as Graham said, if we have to use those, we would want to come back to y'all and work out a road system, because that's typically what we do, like in projects where we have to use a lot of the county roads.
Yeah, as much as you want to stay on 755, you will have to use Asagunada and La Morita Road, there's no doubt about it. I know you can stay within the private property, but eventually, you're going to have to use the road.
Those are incorporated in the agreement, and doesn't, any kind of tax benefit agreement, there's just a relation of improvements and making sure those roads are not just maintained, but also returned to the same level that they were before.
Or better, or better.
Or better.
Yeah, let me, let me just add a comment, and this is more for, for the public. We really have been very fortunate that we've been able to get a lot of this alternative energy into our community. Our, our community, as everyone well knows, is very rich in natural gas, and for years, that is what kept everyone going, the schools, the cities, and of course, the county. However, since the Eagle Fort shales started to come on board, Starr County alone has lost over a billion dollars in value because of the declining price of natural gas. Our neighbor Zapata, you know, they've lost over 2 billion. If it had not been for the alternative energy that came into our county, and when it did, we'd be in very serious trouble right now. You know, letting people go, raising taxes, you know, because there's no way that we could lose that kind of money and not suffer. The wind farms have brought in over a billion dollars into our community. We have a workshop, a budget workshop planned for Thursday, and that is, well, this will be shown, the, the effect that alternative energy has had in our community, even with the abatements that we give. You know, thank God that, that they came in when they did, you know, so, you know, I do want to say that, that I'm very pro green energy, and I think Starr County is a leader when it comes to green energy, and I hope we can continue working. Like I said, abatements are not going to be what they were before, but, because now we have more companies. Currently, we have, Rose, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's four companies and maybe a couple of solar looking at us, so, so now, you know, but, but we want to be friendly to business regardless, but we want to be fair with our taxpayers also.
And maybe to one other data point, we did look at the property taxes paid to date for Los Angeles 3, 4, and 5. I think it's just over $35 million of those projects. That's to the county entities, the schools. And that's over four years, so, and then the other, some of the other benefits, we now got 30 full-time employees at Los Angeles 3, 4, and 5. And that's a bigger project than this one, but it's not a ton of jobs, but it's, they're good, good quality jobs.
Yeah, good, good point. You know, the school districts, in fact, I was, I was at the one in Roma, where Duke Energy alone gave the school district, I think it was a $9 million check, something like that.
Yeah, and for the two districts combined, Roma and Rio Grande City consolidated, was 13, a little over $13 million combined.
So, so our children, you know, everyone's gaining from it. You know, we might not gain from it individually, but the money is, is coming into the community, and of course, it circulates, and everyone benefits from it. I don't know if there's any questions from the public, any comments? Positive or negative?
How, how much larger, how much smaller is this? Do you care if it's a little project?
Yeah, so this project's planned to be 200 megawatts, so Los Angeles 3, 4, and 5 were 500 megawatts. Right now, we're planning to use 56 wind turbines to get to that 200 megawatt size.
And what size is the reinvestment zone?
As far as acreage, acreage? We apparently, it represents an area of between 14,000 and 18,000 acres, and we've been working with about 30 landowners over the last couple of years to develop the project, so it's a pretty large area. But would be, scale would be similar to, like, the L4 project.
Any other question, comment? If not, we thank you, and we'll, we'll work with you for our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and, and open our regular meeting. I guess item 41, no actions needed. Anyone else that needs to come before the court? Come out down. If not, I guess we can go ahead and follow our agenda. Our reports, gas department.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Got to make it as quick as possible. The department is doing good financially, morally, employment wise. The only thing that's about to give us some problems, the, the state has been auditing us like never before. They're auditing every segment of the, of the project, of the system, and next week, week after next, we're going to get audited on a public awareness. It's part of the, it's part of the system that we're not very strong in, and I don't expect a good comeback from them. Public awareness consists of that we're supposed to tell the public of the system how it works, and we're supposed to get response from them as to how they like their, their service. It also includes as training, as first responders, we're supposed to be trained under CPR, in CPR, we're supposed to be trained in fire extinguishing, we're supposed to be trained in, in several other things of the considered emergency response, which we have not done. And this program has been ongoing since 2006. The bottom line on it is that they mandated, FANSA is a federal, a part of Railroad Commission, has mandated this public awareness onto the systems, but they've never trained us on how to do this. They've never told us how to do surveys. They're expecting us to do surveys of the people as, as to what they need and what they don't like about the system. Well, we don't know how to do it. They've never told us how to do it. That is where I think we're going to get a bad-- That is where I think we're gonna get a bad thing. I don't expect anything like fines or stuff, stuff like that, but I do expect for them to tell us that we're gonna have to get on the ball and, and start improving on this public awareness. We are doing what we think we can do without getting proper training, which is keeping in touch with public officials, most of you, except for, I think Commissioner Peña doesn't reside in this, in the part of the system. Most of you get your annual letters as to what, what we do, or what, to expect on the gas system. We do that with emergency system, we do that with the city, we do that with the fire department, most of the emergency systems around the area that the system serves, but that is not enough. They expect us to go further than that, and that is what, what we're not trained in. I'll give you an example. We, we're supposed to give the school districts some type of enhancement as to what gas is supposed to be like, or what, what gas is supposed to smell like, so that the kids can know and report back to the parents. Well, we did it. We did it when I came in ten years ago. North Grammar bugged me for three days. The smell stayed in their school for three days. So, so we refused to do part of, I mean, refused to go back and do it, because we, obviously, we did it wrong. So that is where I'm thinking that they'll come back and tell us, you're gonna get cited or something. Like I said, there's, I don't, I don't expect any monetary punishment over this, but we might have, might be asked to, to improve on these things. Bottom line on it, and, and I'm preparing a disclaimer letter on it, bottom line on it is that they're expecting, like all federal programs and state, they're expecting us to do a lot with, with what staff we have, and without money, without, they're doing it, they're giving us a mandate, but they're not giving us money. So that's gonna be my, my, my try and get away with it thing. I don't see what, what they'll come back with. Other than that, the system is doing well. We're also expecting an audit on October the fifth, I think it is, on our drug and alcohol policies. We, we keep up with that pretty good. I, I think the, the county does pretty well on that, and I don't expect problems on that.
Mr. Alvez, as far as getting feedback from the community, if, if we just had a one-sheet questionnaire there at the office whenever they come to pay, where they could fill it out, wouldn't that be sufficient?
We, we, we have tried that, Judge, and they don't want to. The, the people just, like, they're, we, we've even tried to, to do, we'll answer for them. Or, answer, give me the answer orally. This is the question, give me your answer.
What about if we, we say you have to?
Yeah.
You have to?
Yes, we have to.
It's not a matter of whether they want to or not. You know, we, we do need to stay in, in line, I guess, with Railroad, yeah, with Railroad Commission.
You know, you're the post, I think I've seen it in the newspaper, we used to post that they, what to do in case of abuse.
We, we keep, we keep that part up too, yeah.
And I probably know this, you have to do it every year.
Yeah, we, we do it every year.
It's not enough, you're asking for more?
Uh, it's not enough, because we do it once a year, we're supposed to be doing twice a year. So, yeah, to answer your question, it's not enough. Like I said, we're doing part of what needs to be done.
Yeah.
It's just that, and, and, and at the level that they want us to do it. So we'll see how we come out with that.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alvez. Transfer station, Mr. Alvez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I did leave a financial report there. Everything is normal operation. Wanted to inform you that we're done with the application for the cog, for the truck, about the trying to get another tire cutter. This would be a sidewall cutter for semi-truck tires. So we're hoping that we can get it approved. I mean, we're gonna have to fight to the nail there, because all the other counties will be asking for money and also, but we're very, very, we believe that we can get that money. I mean, we've been getting help from them, so we're hoping. This is a continuation to the tire, scrap tire facility that we got from them, so hopefully we'll get it. The machine will cost around thirty-seven thousand, so.
What size tires, buddy? Get the money.
Uh, from seventeen all the way to seventy. And it, it will take only the sidewalls off, and then you can cut the other part with the machines that we already have. Because the semi-trucks, I mean, have a lot of steel in them, you need to take the sidewalls Other than that, we have no. I want to thank Commissioner Stein, we have a situation this week where we went for some parts to the valley with a trailer, and we got flat over there in McCook, and it was too heavy, we couldn't lift it, and he sent Tiki Screw over to help us out, and we want to thank you, Commissioner Stein, for always being there.
Any other question, comment? Thank you, Mr. Alvez. Tax Assessor, Mr. Alvez.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
In front of you, you have my report, the month of July. The total county what collections for July eighteenth were four hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred. In July twenty-seventeen, there were five hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred. There was a total collection of one hundred and three thousand less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected two million two hundred thousand more than last year. Since twenty-seventeen became, taxes became delinquent on July the first, total year-to-date collections for the Starr County entities remained at thirteen million four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. This year, the tax office collected one million two hundred thirty-seven thousand more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for July eighteenth, just for Starr County, were three hundred and seventeen thousand. Total delinquent collections in July of twenty-seventeen were two hundred and sixty-five thousand. There was a total delinquent collection of fifty-one thousand three hundred more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected one hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred more than last year. As of June thirtieth of twenty-eighteen, there was a total of one hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars as projected current taxes to be collected without counting supplements. In July, the tax office collected one hundred and five thousand eight, eight hundred dollars of twenty-seventeen taxes that turned delinquent on July first, twenty-eighteen. That leaves forty-one thousand six hundred projected twenty-seventeen taxes to be collected. That is my report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
No, Judge.
Thank you, Mr. Alvez.
Thank you.
County clerk, Mr. Alvez.
My report is on the tax.
You got a new format?
Yeah, it's a new format. You see there on the bottom, due to the pressure, that was collected. And there's a great down at the origin there for the office.
But, but that's, that's not, you, you've collected that, right? It's not, it's not actually due, it's collected. That's, it's not actually due to you, you've already collected that?
Yeah, that's collected. That's due to the pressure.
Oh, to the pressure, I'm sorry, yeah, okay.
That's how much it's collected.
Any questions? No. Thank you, Mr. Alvez. Sheriff's Department.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Total projected revenues for the month of July two thousand and eighteen is two hundred and fifty thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. This is four hundred and sixty-eight dollars more than last month, and one hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars more than the year before. Total year-to-date collected for twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen is two million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven, two hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Can I have that figure again? Two million what?
Two million three hundred and thirty-eight, and two hundred and seventy-five.
Nine hundred, nine, nine, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars over that.
More than the, than the year before.
Yeah, the budget is.
Correct. Well, there's more than, than, than the year before.
And you still got two months more?
Correct.
Be over a million.
Hopefully. That's pretty close to it already.
Good job.
Thank you. And the, the average for the federal inmate count is a hundred and fifty-four inmates monthly for July.
Hundred and fifty-four?
Correct.
That's up today?
That was the average last month.
Oh, last month.
The count as of August seventh was?
One forty-nine.
One forty-nine.
That's excellent.
Thank you, Judge.
Any questions, Congressman Mulder? Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
International Bridge.
This is the total revenue for July two thousand and eighteen, and it's a hundred and ninety-four thousand with fifty-six dollars, and we show a decrease of seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-nine with fifty cents for the month of July two thousand and eighteen compared to the month of July two thousand and seventeen. And we also show a decrease of ten thousand four hundred and forty-two with fifty cents on collections for the month of July two thousand and eighteen compared to the month of June two thousand and eighteen. We have other collections of six hundred and eighty-eight dollars with sixty cents, and the grand total for July, it's a hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred and forty-four with sixty cents. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, comments?
No? Thank you.
The Treasurers' Report.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning. Who is it, Tom?
This is the report for the month ending June twenty-eighteen. The General Fund had one point nine million. This is one point nine million dollars. This is one point six million more than at the same time last year. On number two, the Road and Bridge Fund had four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, being three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than at the same time last year. The total cash amount of cash in, in bank and investment accounts in the custody of the county treasurer as of the end of this period covered by this report is fourteen point two million. This overall amount is four point zero million more than at the same time last year. We have continued to monitor our depository accounts to ensure their safety. On number five, there's a last-minute correction, but the combined debt for Starr County was four point four million, being sixty-four thousand dollars more than at the same time last year. The county's amounts in deposits were well collateralized at a hundred and twenty-eight percent. This pledge level is twenty-eight percent above the LGC Chapter twenty-two fifty-seven point zero twenty-two requirements, and twenty-three percent above our contract terms with Lone Star National Bank, and the report is attached. The twenty-eighteen budget includes the borrowing of a new loan for one million dollars tax anticipation. The borrowing of this new one million dollar note is still pending state approval. It is also necessary to report that if the state does not approve the new note, the county will have to lower the twenty-eighteen budget an additional one million dollars. This pre-borrowing process may take forty-five to ninety days, and since the county stated this, started this year, with a negative fund balance in the operating fund, it is important to take action to prevent late payments to vendors or other county budget shutdown, or to avoid another county budget shutdown. Any questions?
Any questions, Congressman Mulder? Thank you.
Thank you.
Under there, Mr. Carter?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Following is my report for the month of July two thousand and eighteen. Roman numeral one, attached are the cash reconciliation reports as of July thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. For the General Fund, cash available at the end of the month was one million three hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents. The Road and Bridge Fund cash available is down to two hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty-two cents, and the payroll clearing cash available, one million two hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Please, please take note of the declining balance in the Road and Bridge Fund. It does appear that the Road and Bridge Fund is going to run out of cash before it runs out of budget. So that's something the Commissioners need to, need to be aware of. Roman numeral two is a summary of the expenditure reports for the significant funds of Starr County as of July thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. The percent of the year elapsed as of July thirty-first is eighty-three percent for comparison purposes. The General Fund as a whole, percent expended was eighty point sixty-six percent. Within the General Fund are the following departments. The County Judge, percent expended, year-to-date is seventy-seven point eighty-eight percent. The County Clerk, Fund, percent expended is eighty-eight point sixty-two percent. The Human Resources Department, percent expended is eighty-five point twenty-one percent. The Planning Department is at seventy-eight point two-nine percent. The federal and state programs are at eighty-four point nineteen percent. The countywide General Fund, percent expended is seventy-five point oh-five percent. The Contract for nine-one-one Services is at seventy-six point three-five percent expended. The County Court at Law is at seventy-nine point ninety-two percent. However, I need to report on that, there are some, there are some unpaid ad litem attorney claims pending, which I'll detail later. The two-hundred-and-twenty-ninth District Court is at seventy-nine point sixty-one percent expended. The three-hundred-and-eighty-first District Court is at seventy-five point eleven percent expended. The District Clerk is at eighty-one point oh-eight percent expended. The County Attorney is at ninety-six point oh-four percent expended. The District Attorney is at seventy-seven point sixty-one percent expended. The County Auditor is at seventy-seven point five percent. The County Treasurer is at eighty-six point four-seven percent. The Tax Assessor Collector is at seventy-five point nine-seven percent. The Building Maintenance Department is at seventy-seven point six-one percent. Detention Center is at eighty-six point ninety-two percent. The Juvenile Detention Center is at eighty-one point five-two percent. The Sheriff's Department is at eighty-three point eighty percent. On to page four, the Agriculture Extension, Agriculture, Agriculture Extension Service is at eighty-one point four-three percent. The Nutrition Program of all four precincts combined is at eighty-one point seven-eight percent, and the Elections Administrator is at ninety-two percent. So some of those departments are getting close to their maximum budget for the year, others are, others are well within the, the year-to-date percent expended. Roman numeral three is the expenditure, is a summary of the expenditure report for the Road and Bridge Fund. The Road and Bridge Fund as a whole is, is eighty-four point one-four percent expended. Precinct number one is at eighty-six point six-five percent. Precinct number two is at eighty- Uh, Precinct Number Two is at eighty-two point four percent. Precinct Number Three is at ninety point two-three percent. Precinct Number Four is at eighty-one point four-two percent. The countywide Road and Bridge Fund is at seventy-nine point six-two percent. Uh, the expenditure reports for the Enterprise Funds is in Roman numeral four. Uh, the International Bridge is at fifty-two point oh-five percent. Uh, the Gas Operating System is at seventy point oh-nine percent, and the Solid Waste Transfer Station is at eighty-five point seven-three percent. At the bottom of page five, Roman numeral five begins the, uh, revenue, a summary of the revenue reports, uh, year-to-date as of July thirty-first. The, uh, in the General Fund, uh, current taxes collected, uh, we've collected ninety-nine point five-one percent of the, of the, uh, projected taxes. Uh, there's a balance of forty-four point, four, forty-four thousand, six hundred and one dollars compared to the budgeted, the projected budgeted amount. Uh, the delinquent taxes, uh, we've, we've, uh, received eighty-one point six-two percent of, of those projected taxes. At the top of page six, the Nutrition Program Grant, um, we've collected eighty-four point seven-two percent of the projected amount. Uh, the Indigent Defense Grant, we've collected forty-six point eighteen percent. Uh, the Nine-One-One Services Grant, we've collected forty-eight point eight-two percent. In the Fees of Office, we've collected seventy-one point five-seven percent. Uh, the Detention Center has collected seventy-eight point three-seven percent of the, of the projected budgeted amount. In the State Salary Supplements, we've collected eighty-eight point seven-four percent. Uh, the Department of Family Services has collected only twenty-eight point four-one percent. The International Bridge Transfers to the General Fund, we've only transferred twenty-one point four-three percent year-to-date. In the Gas System Transfers, uh, we've, uh, we've transferred fifty percent of the budgeted amount, and the Transfer Station, the amount is zero. In the, uh, in the Note Payable, we, uh, didn't, we did not take out the loan that was projected in the budget, uh, so that amount is zero. In the Los Olmos Watershed, we collected a hundred percent of, of that amount. The Building Permits, we've actually collected, uh, one hundred and seven point two-eight percent of the budgeted amount, about three thousand dollars over of what we projected. In the Election Expense Reimbursements, we've collected a hundred percent of that amount. In the Settlement Agreement, we've collected, um, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars, which is a hundred and six point three-five percent of the budget, of the projected amount. The, uh, Rio Bravo Pilot Wind Power Program, we've collected a hundred percent of, of, of that revenue. And the General Fund as a whole, we have collected eighty-one point eighty-two percent of the budgeted, uh, projected amount. In the Road and Bridge Fund, uh, the current taxes, we have collected a hundred and one point seven-nine percent of the, uh, projected amount. The Delinquent Taxes, we've collected ninety point seven-seven percent. Motor Vehicle Licenses were at a hundred and six point two-two percent. Fines and forfeitures were only at fifty-five point six-one percent. Uh, Vehicle Weight Fees are at fifty-two percent. Um, the Rio Bravo Wind Power Pilot, uh, is at a hundred percent. Auction Proceeds of forty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty is a hundred percent of that budgeted amount, and the total for the Road and Bridge Fund, uh, collected is, uh, collected year-to-date is five million, four hundred and two thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, which is ninety-eight point nine percent. In the International Bridge, the, the bridge tolls collected are seventy-nine point seven percent of the budgeted amount. Uh, the rent for Ueta is at seventy-five percent. The rent from the port facility is at seventy-two point five-eight percent. Uh, the Los Olmos Project, uh, contributed a hundred, twenty thousand dollars, which is a hundred percent of that revenue, and the total, the total for the International Bridge, uh, is, um, seventy-nine point six-one percent received year-to-date. In the Gas Operating System, the percent received is at eighty-eight point four percent, and that's all from natural gas sales. In the Solid Waste Transfer Station, uh, the tipping fees collected year-to-date are at eighty point seven-three percent of the budgeted amount. At the top of page eight is a summary of all of the debt owed by Star County. Um, the, the Tax Note Series twenty-fourteen A has a current balance of three hundred and three thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. Uh, the, uh, the fine owed to the Texas Comptroller's Office, I'm, I'm pleased to report, is at zero. That was, uh, the final payment was made on that account last month. Uh, the Certificate of Obligation two thousand and four, the current balance is now five hundred and thirty-five thousand, five, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Uh, we paid the semi-annual, uh, interest in principal payment last month. Uh, the Equipment Loan to KS State Bank, um, uh, the, no payment has been made on that yet. It's not due until October. The balance is seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars. The loan to, the loan that we received from the revenue markets for the International Bridge is down to eighty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The Equipment Loan owed to Caterpillar Financial Services is at forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and the Participation with the City of Roma for the International Bridge is, uh, at seven hundred and seventy-three thousand and thirty dollars. The total, uh, total debt owed by Star County is two million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars as of July thirty-first. Roman numeral six is a summary of the Interest and Sinking Fund. Uh, the, uh, current taxes and the delinquent taxes, um, are actually running over-budget revenue for the year, and the, uh, year-to-date expended is the five hundred and sixty-three thousand and six dollars, which is the payment of interest in, in principal on the Certificate of Obligation two thousand and four, uh, so that is the budgeted amount. At the top of page nine, um, I would like to point out that, again, the County Court at Law has ad litem attorney fees owing of twenty-seven hundred dollars on the, to various attorneys and various dates on various cases. Um, those invoices are, there's no, there's no budget to pay them, uh, so they've not been presented to Commissioner's Court. Um, I'll be talking to the County Court at Law and to the visiting judge that signed those claim forms to see if we can prevent that from happening in the future. On page nine is a summary of the additional revenue that has been certified for the, by the County Auditor, uh, for this year. And we've, this is the same list that has been presented in, at last month's meeting. Um, there was an additional, uh, revenue certification that occurred on August the first, uh, at the Special Commissioners' Court Meeting on that date, and that, that amount is not listed here. My staff and I completed, on Roman numeral ten, my staff and I completed a more detailed analysis of the expenditure reports, and we determined, we identified, uh, the following line items that are at or approaching, um, a hundred percent for the year, that are, in other words, they're very, they're either already over-budget or they're about to go above the budget for the year. Um, the, um, and the distribution numbers are all listed there. The, the County Clerk deputies are at eighty-eight point two percent of their budget. Uh, the County Court at Law Coordinator is already over-budget by seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars, uh, so that's at a hundred and twenty-two point seven-two percent. Um, the ad litem attorneys, um, only have three hundred and seventy-five dollars left available. It's at ninety-four point two-three percent. Um, the Justice of the Peace Precinct Three Internet Service has already expended a hundred percent of their budget for the year. Um, the, uh, Justice of the Peace Precinct Sec- Precinct Six Secretary, um, has already, is already one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars over budget for a hundred and five point one percent. The County Attorney, uh, the Office of the CPS Attorney and the County Attorney's Office, um, is already, uh, significantly over-budget in that line item. Uh, the Election Administrator's Clerk is significantly over-budget in that line Uh, another Election Administrator's Clerk is also over-budget. The Building and Maintenance Janitor in the General Fund is already, uh, eighteen thousand and fifty-two dollars over budget. The, uh, Building and Maintenance Janitors, uh, are all, are fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars over budget. The Annex Janitors are thirty-seven thousand, a hundred and fifty-five dollars over budget. Um, the Building, the Annex Yardman is seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars over budget. Uh, the Detention Center Chief Jailer is thirty-four thousand and eighty-six dollars over budget. Uh, the part-time guards in the Juvenile Detention Center are at ninety-nine point fifty-seven percent of their year-to-date budget. They only have three hundred and seventy-eight dollars remaining available. Um, in the Sheriff's Department, the Sergeant's, uh, Salary is two thousand, one hundred and one dollars over budget. Uh, the Investigators are at ninety, eighty-nine point seven-seven percent expended, uh, so they'll, at the current pace, they will, they will go over the budget before year-end. The Elderly Program Assistant is at ninety-three point six-one percent. The Nutrition, Nutrition Program Precinct Two Director is at a hundred percent, uh, year-to-date of that budget amount, and the, uh, clerical salaries for Precinct One are at eighty-four point six-nine percent. Judge and Commissioners, most of the line items there are salaries. Um, I will tell you plainly that, as County Auditor, um, I cannot refuse to sign paychecks. The paychecks will be signed and will go out as normal. Um, if these budget line items are not corrected, or, I don't know, I don't know when, uh, probably by the first committee, the first, uh, Commissioner's Court Meeting in September. The authority by law that the Auditor does have is to move all available funds from the operating expenses up to the salary expenses to cover the payroll, so the consequence of that, of course, would be that the vendors don't get paid in September. They would use all the money available in the operating expenses.
Mr. Carter, let me, let me interject. Uh, for example, on Building Maintenance, which is the janitors, which is the one that shows, I mean, outrageous, uh, negative numbers, if you look at the building maintenance that you just presented, it's in the black. What, what I've noticed is, and I don't know if it's HR or if it's the Treasurer, whoever, billed to the wrong line item, and therefore, this-
There's some easy, there's some easy corrections to fix most of the things, yes.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is misleading. Uh, there's enough money in the salaries, however, it's being charged all to one line item instead of being broken down into five or six that, that we have. Uh, we, we need to get with HR, uh, and I, I venture to say that the majority of not all of these probably fall under the same condition because-
Amendment to bond.
Yeah, yeah, because if, if, if it were, on your previous report where it shows whether we're red or black, it would show that we're in a red tremendously, and we're not. So, I, you know, and I've noticed on some of mine, and I've gone to HR before, but for some reason, it hasn't changed. It's still the same way.
Uh, what I'm, what I'm basically asking of, for, for the Court's assistance is, let's clean up our books before year-end because I don't want these-
Yeah.
I don't want to have to explain these negative amounts to our auditors, uh-
I'll, I'll get with you, and we'll get with HR, but, but I, I venture to say that most of these are just not being charged to the correct line item.
Yes.
I, I do have a, a couple of questions, uh, on, on your report, Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir.
Um, let's see if I can find them next. Okay, on the detention, page six, it shows that we have collected seventy-eight percent.
One point five.
Yeah, one point five. However, we know we've collected around three million.
Well, um- This amount, the amount shown here for the Detention Center includes the, the, the budgeted amount, includes the additional revenue that I certified earlier in the year. So, that's, that's the-
Well, but-
That's the explanation for the arithmetic.
Well, but, but I think there's, there's something, it, it might be under a different account, because I noticed on the International Bridge, we've showed we've collected twenty-one percent, yet we have seven hundred and some thousand in some other account. So, that's the reason for that low number. The Bridge has collected pretty much a hundred percent if I, if I remember correctly. Uh, you know, so, and, and again, I, I, I'm, I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head, um, Road and Bridge Fund, uh, that's another question that, that I couldn't see. You know, if we have collected ninety-nine percent of the monies that we had projected in our budget that we were going to collect, and we have spent eighty-some percent of it, how, how is it that we're running short on cash?
Well, the answer to that is, the budget is not accurate.
Mr. Carter, I thought we had taken care of all the Commissioners and every department had. As soon as we went into the budget, everybody should have corrected and placed monies on, for all the salaries of the employees. We have done that, everybody did.
Yeah, but that's what the judge is saying, that they're, they're being paid from somewhere else, and it doesn't reflect the correct number.
Well, I think HR should, whoever he charged the payroll should correct them because everybody was supposed to have, we did take care of all that stuff.
I, I, I will get with them, maybe not today, but in the next couple of days, I get with them, and, and I think all of that can be cleaned up very easily.
It can, yes, sir. I was just asking for-
Yeah, and I'll get with you on that, on the, um, on the Road and Bridge, 'cause, you know, we've collected over a hundred percent of the taxes we had projected we're going to collect, and if we have stayed to the budget as far as expenditures, we shouldn't be having a problem unless there's something erroneous.
Except, except for the fact that the budget wasn't accurate to begin with.
Do you know where the mistake is at, Mr. Carter?
I'm sorry?
Do you know where the mistake is at? Do you know where the mistake is at? So, you can get with the judge and tell him where it's at?
That's really hard to say. It's, the mistake is spread out, through the whole, throughout the whole budget.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I agree, the budget is, uh, however, uh, the, the beauty about this thing, and I don't know if, if there's money, but, but we'll get together, is that the law allows us to move money from general to road and bridge, not the other way around.
Right.
So, if we're short on road and bridge, we can, we can make it up.
Yeah, well, it's not a crisis, it's not, it's not an emergency, but it's, it's a matter of concern for presentation to our auditors and for, for having a clean and transparent set of books for the public.
Yeah, I totally agree. We, we, we need to clean it up, yeah.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Any other questions, Congressman Mulder? Thank you, Mr. Carter. Uh, I, I don't have a report. I, I don't have a report. So we'll go on to item six. Okay, let's go back to item three, and this is approval of the minutes. We did get them, and you all have them on your discs.
I second, Your Honor.
Second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item six is to approve the new vendors list.
Your Honor, the vendors documentation has all been reviewed except, except one is incomplete, and that is the fourth item, the fourth vendor down from the top. Ms. Sainz was still pending her information.
Okay.
But all of the others have been reviewed, and the documentation is all reviewed.
Okay, so...
I just move, Your Honor.
We, we approve all of them with the exception of Ms. Sainz.
And you can approve it something to, receiving it.
Okay. Is that your motion, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item seven is an action item. This is to sell a pickup truck at Bond &amp; Bond Auctioneer.
No.
Is there a motion for that?
Yes, there are, my commission to, we approve to finish what you said.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight is to approve a donation in the amount of six thousand dollars on the, for the scholarship fund, and I believe the six thousand came from Murphy Home or, what's the name again? It, it's the same thing as last year, the year before.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item nine is to approve the Starr County investment report, third quarter.
The investment report should be in your packets, and there are currently no known areas of concern for the safety of investments held in Starr County investment portfolio or in regard to deposits held in any particular contracted institution other than item number five below regarding concentration risk. The investment portfolio is of idle cash is two million eight hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents, and a hundred percent of this, of it is in certificates of deposit at Lonestown National Bank. The interest earnings in investments for the third quarter of fiscal year 2017, 2018 was one thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. As per the terms of the depository contract, the county's amounts in deposits are properly collateralized in accordance with a pledge report from Lonestown National Bank. Starr County is aware of the investment concentration risk, which was reported in the annual county financial audit. The county's investments are currently different maturity dates, but at a hundred percent in CDs and only in one bank. To manage this concentration risk, the investment officers monitors and the performance of Lonestown National Bank and its related security pledges very closely. The quarterly investment report for the third quarter fiscal year 2017, 2018 has been prepared in compliance with the Texas Public Fund Investment Act, and Starr County is in compliance with the Texas Public Investment Act.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten is an action item, and this is to reappoint Mr. Winia Falcone and Mr. Jarmito Saravia to Board of Region MHMR. They've been representing us for...
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eleven, you want to discuss it here?
Okay.
What's up to you? We, we can have it here. Okay. Item eleven is to discuss and take action to approve amended amendment to 2015 guidelines for the Starr County Colonia self-help contract number seven-two-one-five-oh-one-three. Ms. Villarreal, welcome.
Commissioner and Judge, the reason for the amendment is to help expedite with the, with these amendments that they came down and, and told us to do. It's to help expedite the project a lot faster. So that's, that's the reason for that.
Your Honor, you know, the meeting that yourself and myself had the meeting with the, the people up in Austin, and they were very, very helpful, and they assured, and made sure that this project is completed, and they reduced all the red tape that they had, made it so easier, so simple to get it done. And he, he told them, or guaranteed me that with their help down here and the gentleman, the director, that we'd be able to finish that project by December this year, which get through with those seven hundred thousand dollar project, and we will be able to generate about two hundred thousand dollars in administration.
Yeah, that, that's going to help out a lot, so, you know.
And, and if, if everything goes well, we should be done, God willing, by the end of the year, and that's even a year earlier than the contract.
And the commissioner was telling me we could reapply for another seven hundred.
Yes, sir. And we'd be doing that by the end of the year.
Seven hundred or a million more immediately. You don't have to wait till, and we need to get to with the commissioner, so that when we go out there and announce for people to apply for the housing rehab, that they notify their people to make sure that, to encourage them to come and apply.
I, I don't know if it, if it's changed, but you could shed some light on it. I think the Colonia has to be approved. For example, if there's a Colonia in Commissioner Peña's area, it, it has to be submitted with part of the grant so that that Colonia can, can qualify.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that's where the commissioner needs to come in.
Yeah, and, and I have notified the commissioners when we do outreach, you know, when we are, we're out there and we publicize it, and we tend to go door-to-door and announce it to each and all the residents that are...
If, if that Colonia had not been approved, and there's a citizen there that really needs the help, can they qualify or no?
If it's not approved, no, sir. They have to be within the...
But I know, remember he discussed about the Amy Young and the other...
Oh, yes. If, if I'm allowed, sir, once, yes.
Even though they're not in the Colonia, but you can use county-wise. If they're not approved.
They, they suggested, which we've done before, the Amy Young program and the bootstraps. With those programs, you don't, there's no designated Colonias.
Anywhere to go.
From Falcone all the way to Sullivan City, you can apply.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that should resolve the, the issue that we have with self-help.
Yeah, because it made it so simple, Your Honor, that all this red tape was given, it was not needed. It was just like impossible to do.
And the change, and the, and the change, and the border field officers, the ones that came down this last past week were able to communicate better. He's, he's doing a lot more, which we should have been doing, but we didn't know we were allowed to. So hopefully with this change, we'll, you know, expedite the project a lot faster.
So I guess you need a motion to approve the amendment? You, you made the motion?
Yes, sir.
Moved back, moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And Ms. Villarreal, before you leave, congratulations. I've heard you're cancer-free.
Yes, I'm cancer-free.
That's always a blessing, so thank God.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, congratulations. Item twelve is an action item, to approve the discounts for the 2018 taxes. You know, we've had this, I don't know, forever, I guess. It's three percent if you pay in October, two percent discount in November, and one percent if you pay in December. It, it has helped us collect monies earlier, which has helped out a lot. Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Action, I'm, I'm sorry. Item thirteen is an action item, and this is to imposition of optional fees for the tax, Texas Department of Motor Vehicles. Ms. Salinas, what's that?
Yes, it's, it's optional, it's an added, add-on fee of ten dollars for the county road and bridge fund, adding to the motor registration, that's been done.
Have we had it, we've had it before, no? Yeah. Yeah, I, I think it, it helps out a lot because that, that goes for our road and bridge.
I second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item fourteen is to renew our support service agreement with Haimer Enterprise. This is for 2018, nineteen. It's the same as we've had before, right?
I second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item fifteen is an action item, and this is to refund on parcel zero-zero-zero-eighty-six-twelve in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. What, what was that about?
This taxpayer just paid the taxes, so I was thinking that he was going to buy this property, but at the essence, the owner decided not to sell, so she ended up paying the taxes owed, so she wants to refund for that.
Oh.
So you were...
I don't think we can return it.
Okay, if, my obligation to the taxpayer is due to you for your decision.
See, 'cause, 'cause our, our obligation is to collect taxes regardless of who pays.
But now your obligation is to tell the taxpayer you cannot do that. Now your obligation to the taxpayer is that you cannot do that, right?
Yeah. Once they pay, it's...
Well, it's just that the...
If I could, we just have a commissioner's court deny.
Okay.
Is legal, legally, the court got it.
Okay, is there a motion to deny?
I do hold it.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Sixteen, seventeen, we've done that.
Yes, sir.
Eighteen is an action item, and this is to approve amended motor pool and general maintenance agreement between the DA and Jaime Sepulveda. This is from the discretionary funds.
I move the way for the agreement, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item nineteen is to approve the order and notice of election for the November sixth election.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Three parts of the...
So this other one, this other one is not good?
This one doesn't work. This one works.
Do, do we need all those voting places for...
We asked the state we can consolidate our election day precincts, but we can't do it without.
Election day, but early vote?
Early voting, I guess, just a period of a, generally, it's a general election, we just can't...
General election, I am, but, you know, so it's, I think a waste of money, but...
So we did ask the state, but we can do it in the primaries, but not in the, in the general, in the general.
For, for early vote?
For early voting or election day.
So for both, we need to have them all open?
We have to open all of them for early vote también. For general, we have to open all of them? We don't have any, even though we don't have elections there?
We have to have one in each commissioner precinct.
So it's mandated that we have all, all ten voting places open, the election day. How about on the early voting?
As well.
All four of them.
All four of them, we have to have one for each commissioner precinct.
I mean, okay, one in every precinct.
We're talking about early voting, early voting of four sites.
Correct. 'Cause we've had before where we...
I think they'll add an amendment, and amendments we can do so, just because it's a general election, we can do that.
Are you going to have ballots for all the precincts in the early voting, sir?
Yes, sir.
Just like the primary?
How about the, I say the, to approve the, the workers, do we have a list of those people?
Yes, I gave it to them.
But it's just the workers, just to, to start the process of the waiting ballot.
No, no.
Not the workers, not the judging clerks, not, it's not that.
The certain people that will work in your office?
Yes.
Okay. I just move, Your Honor, to approve.
Okay, but, but let's take item nineteen. This is only the order and the notice for the election.
So the election?
Yeah, that's your motion. That's your second, Commissioner? Okay, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Now, the item twenty, that's on, on the workers. And, and how many are we talking about?
Three.
Three? And this is for the, for the male?
Yeah, just to start the process of, just pending out the ballot. Right by now.
Move the best.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-one and twenty-two, I think we can take them both at the same, this is... Okay, motion to approve, items twenty-one and twenty-two. Second, discussion.
Hold on, yes, sir. On twenty-two, Your Honor, regarding the condemnation property, that's the one we're talking about. Ours?
Yes.
Arroyo Moreno?
Yes.
Am I correct?
Okay. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Items twenty-three through thirty-seven are budget amendments. Are those in order, Mr. Carter?
Except for number twenty-six, and it's requested that number twenty-six be tabled for future, future action. All the rest of them reviewed, they're all in the...
I second, Your Honor.
Motion in second to approve, all of them, except twenty-six. Twenty-six will be tabled.
Would you just do a motion to table twenty-six separate?
Motion to table agenda item number twenty-six separate.
Do twenty-three to thirty-seven.
And approve twenty-three through twenty-five and twenty-seven through thirty...
Seven.
Seven.
And that's your second?
Number seven.
Okay. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
You got a motion to table twenty-six.
I'm sorry?
Hey, I get a motion to table twenty-six.
Motion to table, agenda item twenty-six.
I move it.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Twenty-eight, thirty-eight and thirty-nine are budget corrections, Mr. Carter.
Yes, Your Honor, those items have been reviewed and they're all, and they're both in order, they are additional revenue that was assigned to these two departments.
Is there a motion?
I don't move it.
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item forty is an action item, and this is to approve an interlocal agreement between Hidalgo County and Starr County regarding of housing of prisoners in Starr County detention.
Contract between Hidalgo and Starr County. They're currently overpopulated, and they're looking for any help whatsoever to house some of their inmates. They're currently housing with Jim Hogg as well in Brooks.
Will they pay the same as the feds or...
More. They're, they're offering fifty-four dollars.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
I'll see.
They offer more in the, the cover medical and, and everything as well, so.
Okay. I have a motion, like twenty seconds. Discussion?
And they actually brought in thirteen on Friday on an emergency...
Make sure that they pay, we're, we're created this time.
All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries.
And on the marshal's side, real quick, I know it takes, before the marshal's secretary approves our billing, it's thirty days. So that's why maybe I'd be a little behind, that's why the numbers show as to our projected revenues is to where Mr. Carter collects. That's why it's a little off, about thirty days.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Item, well, it is eleven forty-five, and we will go into executive session pursuant to... to section five-five-one-point-oh-seven-four to discuss order of salaries. Five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one for possible settlement agreement on cost number or civil action number seven-sixteen-CV-dash-zero-zero-one-oh-three, and the purpose to discuss purchasing ten acres of, of land for the county. And five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two, this is to approve election equipment or to discuss election equipment. Point, five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven, this is to deliberate regarding economic development negotiations. And five-five-one-point-oh-seven-two-five, this is possible action on modification number nine on Olvido Garcia site number seven. Will be out shortly. It is one oh-five, and we're back in open session. I guess we'll go ahead and take the order of salaries. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept order of salaries with the corrections that we discussed.
Second, Your Honor?
Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. The next thing that we discussed was a settlement agreement on civil action number seven-sixteen-dash-CV-dash-zero-zero-one-oh-three.
May I second, Your Honor?
Okay, moved in second to approve what was discussed in executive session on the settlement. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. On the purchasing of election equipment, I guess what we need to discuss is the terms of financing, and, you know, I would like to recommend the five-year financing.
Agreement.
Agreement, if...
I show more, Your Honor, the agreement?
Second. Are these going to be available for, for November, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
They will be available, right? Okay, I have a motion in a second to go ahead and, and approve the purchasing of this equipment, and we will finance for five years. Any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. On the purchasing of the ten acres for a county cemetery here in River Grande City, I guess I'll entertain a motion to authorize...
Prove the purchase, Your Honor, and on the term that we discussed.
I show more, Your Honor?
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. And on the economic development negotiation, that was more information than, than anything, right? So no action needed, and item forty-seven was also informational, no action needed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor?
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second, all in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Your Honor.